Okay, do we have any agenda amendments?
We do have a parent request that...
Oh, that's correspondence, right?
Correspondence, we can do it under correspondence, certainly.
Is it a student issue?
It might be depending.
It's a request to stay for the rest of the year that you could, if you feel you may need to put in executive session or not.
I just wonder if it might be an executive session.
Yeah, it could be.
Right, that's what we thought, we'd start it and then see if it was. Okay. Any other agenda amendments?
No.
Okay. Any correspondence? Yes, we already talked about the correspondence one that we got. Anyone else have anything else? Public comments? Looks like we're good on that. Okay, so that's our first action item approval of the March 20th board meeting meetings. We weren't meeting minutes.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Don. We have a motion to approve them. Anyone second?
I'll second.
Megan seconded. Any discussion?
I wasn't here, so I will abstain, but I noticed that some of the votes were 3-0 and some of them were 2-0. I don't know if that was on purpose or...
I noticed that too. Right, I would've been with somebody...
I think what happened at the beginning...
Well, it was the three of us that were...
The chair did the whole...
Okay, that's it.
The way she could.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think that was it.
Probably all were 3-0 really.
So should we change them to that or keep it as its...
Let's correct it. I think Toby makes, I read that, I think he makes a really good point. Should be 3-0.
Yeah, just first two until...
Quick details. Okay. So do we need to make that, does the motion have to change or do we just change it?
I'll move we change it. We amend it.
With the amended minutes.
Okay.
And Megan says that's good too?
Yes, yeah.
I would say that's good, but...
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. And abstaining.
Yes.
So 3, 4, none opposed and one abstained. Toby was the abstainer.
But they're not...
Four.
What's that? Oh.
Three, 3-0.
Three a's.
Three a, one abstained.
That's why I'm... Oh, because John's not here.
Yes, that's why.
John's on the boat.
John, no, John.
He's on the boat.
Okay, so, thank you. Let's go to our next agenda item, which is our principals' report.
All righty, okay.
Yay, thank you.
I am just gonna kind of highlight a few things, if I may. Let me just pull it up here again. We, I kept, you may have looked at just the enrollment because, you know, we're meeting not on a regular cycle, so I had that from December and then January. And then this is as of the 8th because to prepare the document. So we're staying pretty steady this year. K through 6, we are currently at 526. Total pre-K to 6, 610. I think those numbers are good and they keep rising. We have already a handful of new students registered for next year. Last I counted, I think we were just under 90 working regarding registrations, which are starting very soon. Registrations are done, but our screening days are coming up. So we're not losing kids and those numbers have been pretty consistent for a while now. We are looking ahead to next year's incoming K and those numbers are just as high, around the 90s. This year was a smaller number. It was kind of a backward bubble instead of a bigger bubble. So we really need to continue to look at how we're gonna support our young learners, our kindergarten, first grade, working hard to keep those numbers low. As you know, we've got five kindergarten classrooms right now. And at those numbers, if you do the math, it's gonna be around 17, 18. And then keep in mind, for example, what happened this year, those five K's go into four firsts. So right now, our first grades are, you're, you're the first grade there right now, right?
I have a second grade there.
Second, you second. Second's pretty high too, but that's what happens. They're about 20, 21 in those classrooms. So we're looking academically at how we can maybe do some restructuring with the content and the numbers that we've currently got. It'd be really easy if you had bubble years and you could loop or even do a multi-AH-type classroom, but it's just when they're staying consistent, it doesn't really necessarily help to do that. So we're just exploring that. As those numbers stay consistent, I mean, what we've got right now is not terrible. 21, 22 kids in a class is not terrible. I had this conversation with Julie. But with the behavioral needs of some of our kids, that, those numbers increase quite a bit. And when you're trying to balance your social emotional needs with the academic needs of our kids. So we're very aware of that and we keep looking at that, but I wanted you to have the overview of our enrollment numbers. Just a quick spotlight on data, our fall and spring conferences. Those numbers, when I first looked at it, 80% and 82% felt a little bit low to me, but when you look at it, it's, you know, it's school-wide. And we also have a lot of teachers who follow through with phone conferences, so those weren't like the face-to-face type thing, so maybe 80% is still good. And usually, what I think is funny is usually spring is our lower number and fall is typically higher, but this year was just kind of an anomaly with that. Very quickly on some things we gave shout-outs.
Before you leave that, I would be interested in the future, because I do think those numbers are low, thinking back to 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Be interested in, not teachers' names, but, you know, how many, how many students or how many teachers are contacted, how many families.
Right.
You know, I don't wanna get into anything too specific, but if you came back and said, you know, nine of my teachers made 23 conference contacts, that would give us some indication of...
And I can definitely do that. And I, some, a lot of times, if one family's not signing up for one kiddo and they have four or five kids, I mean, sometimes that's it. I don't always attribute it to a teacher, more of some families or things. But I have that data and I can definitely do that.
And I don't, I don't wanna, because it's a two-way street. Parents have to take responsibility too. But it would just be, I'm curious, how many teachers would say, oh, I have five people not come in, I think I'll make five phone calls.
And they, they are required to do that and our teachers will follow through and I appreciate you saying it, it's a two-way street. Basically what happens is the times are given for conferences. There are four classrooms that do their conferences together, so they're here an extra night, which I think is really great because they don't have to do that. But basically, if a parent can't come in during that time, they try to fit them in on their own off-time of conference week, or they can have a telephone conference. There's, and that's really the expectations that teachers will follow through, so by like the third or fourth try, if they can't make that connection, then we usually send them a report card home. But I will definitely get that for you, for sure. Exciting things, I had just put a video link in here of our next version of What's News. Rusty Gregory did, we have televisions in both entryways and there's continually news feed being run of our kids, with still pictures, but now the video showing. Our Twitter feed is live there, so today I took pictures of the concert practice and they were up there, you know. It was just, it's really cool that it's kind of real time with that, so celebrating our kids there. We are doing a coin drive for our playground. When I wrote this, we were at $2,100. Right now, we're over $3,000 that students and staff have brought in just with their coins. So people are really taking it seriously. Shout-out to these students who went to, actually, these are all of our musical students. We had on Thursday, April 4th, at BFA was our strings, I just wanna read the string orchestra, district string orchestra. Gianna Messier again brought these students, Lucas Underwood, Maddox Fox and Drew Toberg. Then, these students are preparing for the middle school district chorus festival. Cadence Richard, Madison Evans, Hayden Warren and Maria Schura. Then, for the middle school district band festival, shout-out to Julia Tignanelli, am I saying that right, Joel? Josie McGuire, Mallory Briere, Abby Johnson, Amelia Partlow and Abby Wilcox. So all of these kids have put in extra time practicing in their dedication, thanks to Gianna and to Amy Riker for their dedication to our kids, to be able to allow them to do that. Huge, huge thank you to Joan Lumbra and Deb Boucher for their leadership and then for all of the staff who helped out. We had over 30 staff members helping with our annual academic carnival. This year, the theme was, oh, the places you'll go. Had a total of 80 families with a total of 277 people. And it was nice and those numbers, I know Joan and Deb maybe were a little disappointed. The number was really good because there were four different, five different locations, but it wasn't packed. People could enjoy the time with their kids, the movement was good, so. And this is based, this is our parent involvement money through our Title I. So getting families in here to do some academic learning with kids is great, but the leadership of those two, as you've seen from the past, they just, it's incredible. You're wondering what your teachers are doing, summer's looking busy for them already. We have 27 teachers who are gonna participate in the second Math Menu course. We're very proud to say that that will mean that 100% of our classroom teachers are trained with Math Menu, so that that's an implementation that will happen school-wide in our classrooms. Joan Lumbra's thrilled, the teachers who are already doing it feel that it really helps them to differentiate their instruction, gets that tier-one and tier-two learning for kids, so it's phenomenal. Then we have four teachers at the middle school level who are gonna be part of, part two for developmental design. Our safety team is doing a half-day retreat for planning and we have a full-day EST planning day after our team spends two days with Jen Patnau. So we're really trying to solidify our EST team and get even better at what we're doing. These, a lot of these pieces, actually, all of those pieces I just mentioned are gonna be the professional learning that's happening on those days that teachers come back after kids leave. So those days are gonna be very, very busy for all staff. Sback is coming, so our teachers, under the guidance of Rusty Gregory again, we have had practice sessions for our kids, so they're feeling comfortable with the assessment. They're doing really, really well. For about an hour and a half in the morning, it's kind of like all hands on deck. We're practicing a quiet, test-taking environment. It's easier to do because it's this whole building, so it doesn't impact Babcock at all. They just go around, you know, their, their day. But we're gearing up for that in the month of May. We have regular Sback, we have science and now we have some PTE assessments. So May is a very, very busy month of assessments. Placement process is starting, that seems hard to believe, but that's gonna be happening May 13th, the week of May 13th. Already mentioned, K screening is happening on May 2nd and May 6th. And, oh, this is pretty exciting. Our teachers have been doing a book study all year, based on our work with Joelle Van Lent in resiliency. They got to choose one of four books and they've had time to read the book and then they get together in their groups and they've worked on presentations and will do it like a jigsaw on May 22nd. So every teacher's gonna get to learn the content that was in the book, even if they didn't read it. And the teachers are also presenting strategies that they can use within their classroom. That's something new for Swanton schools. Some schools practice book groups constantly, it's just a part of their culture. It's something new for us, but people have been feeling pretty good about it, so I think it's something that can really continue for us. It's a good way of sharing their knowledge. Jason gave a really quick update on facilities. They were incredibly busy, as you know, over February break. He worked on the new copier room, which is outstanding, worked on the de-escalation or the safe space next door. And we have a new water fountain, the water filling, the bottle filling station, which is saving money. We got that in the Babcock gym. Floors in the Babcock walk-in cooler, all the maintenance are up to date. And he said at that point, we hadn't lined up our contractors for our summer projects, but he has been reached out to some at the request of the board, so I can kind of give a mini-update on that. I told him I would go back with maybe a definite sooner versus later, but he, he does have, he's been working with Laura on the lighting project, because we are moving forward with that in the Babcock parking lot. The playground, obviously, is still moving forward and...
I think that cameras.
The cameras, yeah, upgrading on the cameras. Those were things that were in the current budget and our capital reserve fund. Those monies were all allocated.
Camera was safety grant also.
Safety grant, yeah. In speaking of safety grant, we're also looking for some more money right now because when the fire marshal came in before, we had a lot of doors next door propped open, especially in the cafeteria. And that's for each entry and the little kids, it's hard to hold those doors, but we can no longer prop them open. We had a rope there, I mean, going in the gym area, so we are trying to find the money right now for door magnets, which Jason has budgeted all out. They were quite expensive, so we're looking to see if there's any safety money or visbit money, we're looking into that. That's something that's not really gonna be a choice, that's something we're gonna have to do. So he's been working really hard getting all those things together.
What about the ASH specialists?
That is gonna be our conversation tonight. That's our summer project and he, he did go ahead and talk with people.
Good.
We just have to, that's what we're gonna talk about when it comes to budget.
Not trying to hurry, just wanted to...
So he, I did take that direction and said, let's move forward like it's gonna happen and we'll see, but... And then just the updating, updated end of the year, it's really hard to believe. One thing, just in connection with this, and I'm hoping this isn't okay to bring, time to bring it up. We are looking at end of the year, Julie, you may, I mean, we right now in Swanton have three snow, three, now I wanna call them snow days, three professional days to make up. So just so the board understands, I think we had talked about this before, we had four snow days this year. Swanton asked the board and Julie to have an additional in-service day in August because of some of the trainings we were doing. So we were taking a risk that we have at least one snow day, that teachers technically wouldn't have to make up that day according to contract. So we had a total of four, right now, we have three days. So our calendar stands for students that we would end on Friday the 14th. As an SU, in...
My apologies, I couldn't hear what you said.
Come on, that's my phone, I don't even have, I don't even wanna watch, I didn't even have my phone. I don't even know how to...
They're always listening there.
Sorry about that. So in anticipation of another snow day that would've brought us with kids into the next week, we chose to have a half-day on our last parent conference day. We tried to communicate that to families as best we could. So we had a half-day and still been in our conferences. So at this point right now, barring any other storms or anything, our last day is Friday the 14th. What we did last year with the approval of the board was we ended up folding our sixth grade recognition night on Tuesday. Our sixth graders came to recognition, they had already had their celebration the week before, they didn't come back for those next two and a half days. And we finished out the year, our Wednesday is our summer send-off celebration, Thursday, and then Friday morning is our step-up day anyway. So at this point, that was just really informing the board, but then we always ask, I guess, for approval, so to speak, on that last day being a half-day. MBU is not in session that day, it's scheduled graduation at this point. We have found that with the other schools doing the half-day, the whole day's long, we usually do our step-up day in the morning, kids get to spend time in their new classrooms and the last couple of years, that's worked really well. Kids have lunch before they leave as well. So that's just kind of checking in to make sure that that is okay, that we can communicate that. And that's kind of just it, part of the whole end of the year planning.
My only question is why the sixth graders are...
Well...
I can see...
I tell you, the reason, last year, and it worked really, really well last year, there was a conflict with another sixth grade and we try really hard not to. MBU always has eighth grade on that Wednesday, so we can't do that. Typically, it had been on the Thursday night when we're out on a Friday. We had gotten a lot of feedback from families who might have kids in, grandparents mainly, in both schools, in Swanton and Highgate. Franklin doesn't seem to be as much, so we tried to make it so people would have them on separate nights. So by doing it Tuesday, usually what has happened in the past, Dawn, and you may remember years ago, after recognition, it's kind of like done. So they didn't come back last year, the next day, and we had just K through 5 doing that celebration. The teachers were running the events that day, sixth grade teachers, and then they were a part of the step-up celebration. Does that make sense?
I guess so.
Okay.
No, I, I can see that, I can see the conflict you come up against. It's gonna be interesting when we go to a new district though, one district, not one school.
Yeah, it's, it really is a challenge with the celebrations in the different schools, not so much for at the schools, but it's family.
It's family, sure, yeah.
Especially if they have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. And I think all of the elementary schools have always respectfully stayed away from that Wednesday night for eighth grade. And then, of course, Friday night, we're not ever gonna compete with that, nor would we want to at that point.
So at MBU, is that, is that the middle school on this Wednesday night?
Yep, eighth, eighth grade.
I should know, I've been going for years, put it to the right, put it to the right. All right.
The only feedback I would have is, since I've been on board, there's always been some grumblings about half-days. So I know we had a half-day to, there was a shift there for the other conference day.
Yeah.
And I know it's unavoidable, but I'll just repeat, 'cause I know I hear that sometimes, there's some parents who feel that a half-day is a wasted day for the kids.
Right.
And I think, I don't know if attendance goes way down, but I wouldn't be surprised.
Usually, the last day it doesn't. On some of our other in-service days, it is. And I know the high school runs into that too.
Yeah.
The last couple of years, when we've had the half-day, the attendance hasn't gone down because the kids are usually looking forward to that step-up use. I agree, attendance is hard on those other days.
I think it's a combination of both. I think some parents think it's always the day of learning for their kid, which I think is a little harsh, but I also think there's a convenience factor for them too.
It's a true concern.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
It is a big issue.
That's why we're trying to balance it, so that, you know, we really need to have the data days to do that work and you don't have that many in-service days in our calendar. And yet, you know, there's some push to have more of them and I think that more of them would be more than our community could, could handle because the family obligations, finding childcare once in a while, I mean, with even snow days, it's challenging for families. So doing more than what we do, I think, is a challenge.
I'm not personally upset, I just hear that sometimes.
I've heard that.
I would wanna pass it along.
And we are having that conversation at our admin meetings because there's those other days sprinkled into our calendar as well.
Unless there's that shortage, daycare shortage around here, which makes it incredibly hard.
I just know that when I worked in a school district that didn't do them and my kids would have them, I would say, what, again? Okay.
There are districts that don't. I mean, I was, I thought we were more strong with that than you do. I inherited a district where before Thanksgiving vacation, for February vacation, they all went out, but we served them lunch at some home and totally illegal, but, but I, I know that it stopped. The end of the, the last day of school doesn't bother me as much as others. One time, I had this real bright idea that we'd keep all the children there, all the teachers could do their thing, their data, whatever, and we would hire paraprofessionals and other people to come in and keep the kids engaged in activities and games and everything. It'd be afternoon.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, but it costs money, it costs money. But it, not everybody was that excited with my idea, but at least it addressed the concern of the parents of finding children.
Well, having worked in a place where the half-day in-service were not scheduled or utilized well for teachers and then coming here and seeing how incredibly on-task and productive and busy that the teachers are looking at and reflecting on their data to change their instruction, no, I feel good about what we do do and we are very cognizant of the impact on families.
When we get that new unified district, that's one of the things we can talk about and how we wanna restructure.
Lots of things.
Well, they're all, they're all in alignment about it now, so that's nice.
It's good.
So that's it. The only other thing I would add, and it's not in my report, but I just always like to report to the board that our non-union staff members, those evaluations have all been completed and we're working on our teacher end-of-the-year things and...
Who does all with all here?
She did a lot.
You do them all?
Usually, Justina and I do them together because most, well, all of those people work for and with both of us. This year, just with different circumstances and the timeline that we're on, I completed that.
That's quite a commitment. Good job.
Thank you. We have good people, so...
Makes you different.
Certainly does. And I enjoy being able to sit down and talk with them. So never enough time for that, so.
Okay, thank you. Julie, superintendent support.
So I first, I wanted to highlight our students who went to the state STEM fair. We had some wonderful participation and I'm gonna do them justice. I have pictures of two of our students who topped, who placed very well and I don't have my glasses on, so.
Don't mind.
That's okay. I'm just gonna make this bigger. We had a lot of students go, but Ella Partlow was a gold medalist, meaning she was in the top 10. And her project was how various artificial sweeteners affect Drosophila mellangea gaster populations. I'm sure I'm saying something incorrectly there.
I'll just jump in because she's a Swanton student and she was one of our middle-level scholars when she was here in sixth grade, so it's not surprising that.
Does anyone know what that population is?
Ella.
Little research.
Ella.
Ella.
We can have her come in and give us...
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
And then Emma, well, actually, didn't some of the students come and share?
I was just gonna say, yeah, they came. Jim Daly and Rich Ballard coordinated with Christine DePati and I think they went to Highgate as well. And they had a STEM fair set up here, so the, some of the kids brought down their whole display and our sixth grade walked around and got to visit as these, as these kids presented. So it was a really great thing for them to see that and look at what they could be doing as well.
I saw Mrs. DePati there, 'cause my daughter was in there, I thought that was great. Just it was the blending of the middle school, elementary school, 'cause they were up there and the high school.
Ella Medor was a silver medalist in the top 30 in Vermont, doing lactic acid fermentation in sourdough starters under various conditions. We sent 16 students to Norwich to compete with over 140 from over Vermont. Students did exceedingly well. I've listed many of their names and that is the press release that was there. I have no idea why this came out looking so. Let's just leave it with pictures of Emma and Ella there and I can just talk the rest of the time. So I just have to say, you know, when I was a judge at the STEM fair at MBU, it's such a rigorous process and I really like the fact that you can have students who have incredible science as content in their presentation and their, their project, the word I'm looking for. And other students who are maybe doing something less rigorous, but their learning is very authentic in terms of the scientific method, understanding the use of data, the presentation and interpretation of data, their, their obviously public speaking and presentation skills. So every entry point of students in that building, it is really very rich learning that happens and it's just, it's absolutely wonderful. And, you know, as a judge, next to somebody who's an actual real scientist, rather than somebody who was just sort of good at science in school a long time ago, it was quite interesting to see the, the... it was quite interesting to see the feedback that was given to our students from people who are really practicing in science fields, and so it was great. A great placement for all of our students.
I think it was a good blending with the private sector, too, like I said, because my father-in-law was involved. He's involved with a STEM group with the Herrera's, who own a lab in St. Albans, so it was really neat. And there's something very similar, the history fair. My ally did that, and it was very good, it was a learning experience, sort of first year, so I think she learned a lot from it. But I was, the same thing, I deal with a history fair with the eighth graders, and what I thought was, what was so great about that was there were kids that were like definitely out of their comfort zone, but they were proud of their projects and wanted to present them, and I purposely went to the kids I didn't know.
Yeah.
And I was very surprised by, surprised and proud of those kids for, they didn't know me, and they, if I had to guess, I could tell some of the backgrounds, and I thought they did a great job. So it was a good opportunity for a wide group of kids.
No, it is, and, you know, for me, I'm looking at everything like a teacher and asking kids, you know, who are like, and what do you think that, I'm trying to like get at their vocabulary understanding and everything. Probably not the scientific way to go about it, but it was really a great opportunity. I was so proud of our kids, and we do have such a large percentage of kids from our school that do well there, so.
I think it impressed me with the science is the depth of knowledge. I like the eighth grade thing, but you can tell it's the first time.
Oh, yes, definitely.
And they have their presentation, but don't ask too many questions. Because, you know, you can see, you can see the perspiration starting to come because like, what are they going to ask me next? But in the science fair, you can really dig pretty deeply, and I'm not a science major, but I like science and some of the health stuff, and they've done their homework, they've done their homework.
The only other piece that I put was just an update that came from the legislature. I think one of the things for us to pay attention to is the lead in water bill. As far as I know, the House and Senate are still disagreeing about how much funding to put toward the remediation of water. I think last I had heard, they were at 70% funding, and Vermont School Board Association, superintendents and so forth are all sort of lobbying to get 100% funding. It's not actually a lot of money either, it's really just symbolic of the commitment to not have unfunded mandates on schools, so.
There's a much bigger, I don't know how much time you want to spend on this, but there's a much bigger issue around this than talking with some of the people in Malphalia, is that they are focused on like water fountains and things. If you are a municipal water system, the acceptable allowable parts of lead are significantly higher than what the legislature, I mean, some people's legislatures have gone off the deep end. I mean, the water would be holy water if you went with their standards, no, so many parts.
Three parts per billion versus 15.
Fifteen for municipal. So if you're a municipal system, what are you going to do? Take out your whole system and take the lead out of the?
And if the problem is the municipal line, then schools aren't subject to making those changes, so it's just okay.
So if your kid goes to those schools, it's all right, you can have lead if you have a municipal system, if you don't, yeah. It's, I don't know, I've been following it, I'm just hearing, it's really bizarre now, it's really bizarre.
Well, it really has to do with how legislation in Vermont has a lot to do with the lobby and who comes and presents an issue, and if it connects with some people, all of a sudden, we're off over here.
Nobody wants lead, but if 15 parts is good in a Swanton system, should be good in a school.
I don't know why three is, no. I mean, nobody wants lead, however. Yeah, those are bills that we're paying attention to, for sure. I think the latest that we understand around the Act 46 delay, H 39, is that it continues to linger in conference committee. And there's talk of, at the last minute, hopefully, language for a default budget would be put in the miscellaneous education bill. I don't know whether 173, the partial delay, has been approved. I think it was approved by either the House or the Senate, but not both at this point. I think it's House. Sorry?
Not both.
Not both, it was one.
Neither is both, right?
Yeah. So, you know, we'll see whether that happens or not.
Do we have, I should know this, do they have a tentative date of adjournment for this session?
I don't know as of now, but it's usually mid-May.
It's usually the Saturday before Mother's Day.
Right.
I mean, there's no such thing as usual, because we've been there in June, but that's a target, I can believe that's a target.
I was going to say, it's early, Mother's Day.
Yeah, it starts to be the bit.
So that's.
May 3rd would be when it ends.
It's all, it's pretty soon.
They could see 11, but I heard.
It'd be great if they ended pretty soon. Essentially, that's what I have for an update. I will tell you, I had some surprise come in mail on Saturday. I had volunteered to read some rules that are being developed by the state for Act 173. They were looking for superintendent new special ed, and I said, "Ah, fine, I'll read some rules." And then I got some mail, and I thought the two things had to do, but my husband just came in saying, "You got an envelope from the governor," and that's like, gee, I didn't even know that he mailed out your new licenses by him. But I got appointed to the advisory council for special education. And I didn't know that was happening. Apparently, Dan French appointed, suggested me, but didn't tell me. But so I found out that it's not too big of a commitment. It's probably every six to eight weeks, there's a meeting. So I'm hoping that that will be not too large of a commitment.
Just what you need, more meetings, but it is a good thing.
I think it will be good, especially with 173 coming up in each chamber, particularly around bumps with implementation. I think it would be an opportunity.
Does everybody know 173?
Sorry, Act 173 is the law changing special education finance and how special education is funded in schools. And then also, there's a professional development and practice portion of the law, too. It's also very.
Is that getting delayed the other night?
They're discussing it, but it hasn't passed both chambers yet.
Well, congratulations.
So I just wanted to notify you of that.
I'll be there.
Yeah, and it's going to be good to have.
Somebody knows something.
It did confuse me.
I will tell you, it did confuse me. How did this happen? But thank you, Dan French.
The agency last year was given two new positions, at least two new positions in special ed to implement this, and as of this date, the new secretary is sitting on it.
They have not failed all their bases.
They implement some new new special ed.
No, it is going to be difficult. I mean, they have very good and dedicated people, but they are not necessarily always the experts in the content.
And to the other things.
Can we start with the requests that we've had, the correspondence?
Absolutely.
And then decide whether, if we do need to take it to, I'm just thinking, would it be with your superintendent?
It certainly can. So a family with a fifth-grade student is selling their house and thought it was going to take, you know, three months or so to do that, and apparently it sold in a week, which is great to hear for Swanton millionaires.
Or CLA.
Isn't that, that's immediately where I went.
That's exactly where I went, too.
It sold in a week.
It sold in a week. And so they're requesting that their child stay for the remainder of the school year, and it's a very different situation than when we have requests at the beginning of the school year.
Right.
And I think administration supports.
Did they tell you when they're closing on the house? Are they already closed?
I don't think anybody closes in a week. That was not part of the letter.
Is this something that we do want to go take, push to executive session, or is this something to discuss here?
In the past, we've done it in executive session.
Then let's.
Let's make a finding to see if we want to.
Add that to the executive session. Do I have a finding? Do I do it?
Somebody just needs to make a finding.
Make a finding.
I'm wondering if there is, like, I know in the past we have, but if we're not stating details about the family, is it necessary?
I think there's ramifications for the public, is my thought in terms of.
If there's any discussion where you start talking about the individual student, it could become something that premature public, it's a confidentiality issue if you start talking about our students' good standing and so forth.
I'm concerned that we don't know when they sold their house, closed the house. I mean, it sold in a week, but, you know, you could sell your house right now and still not close for 30 days or more. I wish they put that in there because if they closed in February or March, or are they going to close first of May?
Well, why does the closing date matter? I mean, they're moving regardless of how long they're going to be here.
That's when they're a resident.
Right.
As long as, as long as they own the house, they're a resident here. When they sell the house, they're no longer resident here.
So it's already, oh, but you're right, it has to go to closing. So I'm sure it's quick closing from the point that I got out of that.
I think they plan to move before the end of the year.
Do you know if they're still living here in Swanton?
As of the writing of this email, yes.
When was that?
The 15th.
So they're still living.
What is our policy? When do we say, "Yes, let's finish up the year," or is it always?
It's case-by-case basis.
It's what you.
It's a case-by-case basis. You have a policy about, that really would be about folks requesting to stay for the majority of the year and about charging tuition, but your practice late in the school year is a little different. It depends on circumstances.
Historically, when I was on the board before, if it was in the last quarter, it was in the last quarter, and this would be in the last quarter, that's why I asked, to put it to closing. But if they, if they wrote the letter this week and put the house up and told them, it's a little bit.
This is always the gray area, April, May, June, because you're also worried about potential precedents. And that's sometimes why it's an executive session issue because of legalities, in my opinion, of the potential legalities of the decision we make. So I'm curious, well, if they're a resident, if they have a house and they've moved, then the receiving school is not going to matter. It's not going to be an issue with the receiving school. Right, obviously.
And it is a sixth grader, you said, right?
Fifth.
Oh, fifth grade.
So Toby, do you want to make a finding?
That we should discuss.
So, well, I mean, if someone wants to entertain the motion to, as chair, you could always entertain the motion, but I don't know if anyone's making the motion yet or wants to. So, and if, my thought is, if no one's going to make the motion, we probably should talk about it in executive session. Might want a recommendation from the principal or the superintendent to on what might be best for the kid.
Right, which would be the reason why you'd want an executive session.
Right. I didn't know the chair could say, could not make, could make a motion to take us to executive session.
Well, really, what you're looking for is a finding in a regular partisan meeting that you believe that this would be something appropriate for executive session for one reason or another, the premature public knowledge reason, or because it's a student matter and confidentiality is an issue.
Can I make that finding?
You certainly can, or you can ask somebody else to make that.
I'm fine, I mean, I'm fine making that, and for the student confidentiality reasons.
So I think, I think from what I've been hearing there is consensus to that. I think we want to go in with it, so when we go there, I think we'll talk about it.
We'll add that to.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to old business.
So Act 46, we sort of already talked about the legislature. Judge Mello made his split decision where three of the items in the litigation were forwarded, were dismissed and eligible to be heard at the Vermont Supreme Court.
Through an appeal, right.
Through an appeal. And the issues remaining really do have to do with the assumption of debt and those issues which were not just clear on the face of them, and so evidence and positions will be shared, and a final decision will be made later. I don't know when that will be, when that hearing is scheduled.
Going to ask if anyone knew.
I don't know. Usually our school attorney sends me an email and lets me know when the hearing is coming because he's been attending all of them. So that's where we are there. The transition board updates, I don't know if anybody wants to give updates on our last meeting.
The last meeting or that information meeting? Because I wasn't at the last meeting. I was at the information meeting, but I wasn't at the last meeting, because I was on a Wednesday.
I was at the last meeting, and we're still, well, I'm trying to think of which. I know we've got the Articles of Agreement warrant, and we've had the information meeting for the Articles of Agreement, so that's working out well.
One of them.
One of two. One of the information meetings.
One of the information, thank you. And then the Saturday, the 27th, is it? That'll be the second informational meeting, and we're on track for March, I'm sorry, we're in April, for the voting. Is that April 30th?
April 30th.
Okay, so the voting. And we have two illustrious board members running for that board, Dawn and Megan, just putting it out there. And then, so in terms of where we are with the budget, we've had some discussions about budgets, but, you know, I thought we'd said we weren't going to meet again, that we were pretty clear on our budget and what we were doing, so.
By understanding that you were ready to kind of stop working on it in the next, the new board would take on.
But we did, we did say it wasn't set in stone because we were going to have our own board meetings look at the budget. Like, Highgate still had to look at theirs, Swanton still had to look at theirs, so that we could respectfully get a final check from our principals before we went ahead and said this, "Let's just join the budgets."
And also, I think because of timing with this cool break coming up next week and then the election, there didn't really seem to be a time to do further work. And they really felt like, you know, the newly-elected board will take it to the next level. Either they'll be comfortable moving forward with the budget as presented, or they'll say, "No, we just want to, we want to bring it in a little bit this way or that way and make a little, some recommended changes." So that's just really where we are. As far as local budgets, the only local district at this point to warn a budget is still Franklin. The others, and we'll be talking, we'll be reviewing this budget pretty soon.
Right.
On the agenda, but the Highgate board did not warn a budget. They reviewed it and discussed it, and they may review it again their next meeting.
Why is Franklin warning it? Like, what, do we know what their end game is for doing that? Just another.
They, one of the reasons why they did it is they were feeling very confident there would be a delay. And honestly, I don't disagree with that belief because it depends on what day you were reading the news, right? So, I mean, at one point, we just all were sure it wasn't going to happen, and then we were sure that it was definitely going to happen. I sat at a table with legislators, and every single person in that room, every single superintendent, every legislator that was there assured us that there would be a delay. It was just a matter of House's version, Senate's version, or some combination. And then that was a month ago, so.
Can I have a follow-up to that question? And that is, is the same budget that they put out, that they're warning, is it the same as the budget that's going into the budget that's being handed over to the?
Yes, the only thing that looks a little different is, well, there may be a few lines where there's pennies, you know, dollars, a few dollars difference, but primarily, yes. And the revenues are no longer being net out of the assessments. I'm sorry, let me say that the other way. At the local level, the revenues are being net out of the assessment lines, whereas the merged one, we're not doing that. So the central office lines, ECP lines, special ed lines, they look a little different, but it's just where we're applying revenues. but it's just where we're applying revenues.
So did they come up with, you know, in the past, we've always had to say what the equalized pupil cost is. Did they do that? And what was it?
You might ask that. 15,263.
15,263. You know, I'm probably going to ask you some more about this when we get to it. I just was curious about that. Okay.
So that's rough.
That, that, so because we all have to consider, our board has to decide if we're going to warn.
We're going to talk about that, right?
Yep, that's coming up soon.
So that's coming up soon. Okay, so let's wait for that. So what, where are we on the?
We're, we're talking about the transition board update. So we did, we did have one informational meeting. We had about, I'd say 30 people there.
Yeah.
And.
Did you count that?
I didn't count.
Oh, I thought it was us.
Counting us would be more, huh?
Oh, counting the board would be more.
Yeah, if we count the board.
I thought there was only like 15.
Perception is reality.
Perception. So the, and we will have another one again on Saturday in the MVU library on the 27th of April at 10:00 in the morning. Just so that we're getting as much information out as possible.
Well, that we advertised, I know that that was part of the discussion at the informational meeting.
Oh, right.
Are we putting it on like the electronic board in town?
Yes, we're, hopefully we're going to be able to do that. And we, I also have contacted the messenger and their education reporter is going to contact me. So we'll see if they can do a story talking about the default articles and.
What happens if you vote no?
Right.
If you just get me the specifics, I'll make sure it's on our Facebook, our school.
That would be great.
That's wonderful.
I had a parent ask me yesterday about the Wednesday Weekly. And I said, I know we use the Wednesday Weekly for the meeting in March, but apparently we didn't get you any information for information meetings.
So let's do that.
I don't quite understand that the, personally for me, I don't quite under, well, I guess I do understand when I think about it. The Articles of Agreement, they're not exactly something that you think, hmm, how does that impact me? Right, it's budget. You know it impacts you. So Articles of Agreement, I don't know what we do to, to get interest or if it's even that important that everybody go to it. I mean, Swanton doesn't seem to have the same concerns if we go back to the, those default articles, as far as I'm concerned.
I think the biggest thing is not necessarily the attendance, but people understanding, like, there's a way to summarize the differences. And I think if we put together a small, easy to read comparison of default versus what the amendment committee has put together and the transitional board is hoping to adopt, I think that's more important than.
It's disinforming.
Yeah, yeah.
I think so too.
And putting it out, you know, having it, I'm not, I don't remember who mentioned it, but that the Articles of Agreement were in the paper, you know, you can't, you can't read it. And to be honest, nobody wants to read the whole thing. I want to be able to skim it and say, this is, this is what the difference is.
Yeah, you got two choices, this one or this one. It's not like, I think that's important. I think that's a really good point. I think that would help us in the next meeting on Saturday to not go through it, like you said, but to, well, he did a nice job of going through it though, I will say.
He didn't, can we summarize the longer ones?
It was good, the way you did that.
I'm just saying in the paper, like, I'm not going to sit there and read Articles of Agreement in the newspaper when they're that little.
Yeah, you're right.
No, I did add a slide that sort of talked about the fact that it's not a choice of, do we have these or have nothing?
Right.
You know, that it's a difference between the imposed ones and those that the board is proposing.
Right.
And what the, most of them are identical to the imposed.
Right. The big things are the representation and.
The representation and the bars.
And the bar, you're right.
The bars.
It's more stringent.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The more stringent bars for closing, changing.
Yeah.
What do you mean bars?
For the, to make changes to them. So if you, you know, if you wanted to change representation, the bar to do that is a little more stringent in what the board proposed versus what the imposed one.
Well, also if you wanted to reconfigure schools, the bar is a little higher.
You just needed a majority in the default.
But in this, you need two thirds.
But in this, it's three quarters.
No, we didn't do two thirds.
For changing the grades, only for closing, right?
We didn't do two thirds for anything.
It's three quarters.
It's three quarters of the board to approve it to be warned.
And then majority of voters.
And then a majority of the voters.
Of the voters, right.
I still disagree with that. Why should elected officials be able to keep the public from voting on something?
So that, I think one of the unintended consequences though, is, and it's important for voters to realize, and I'm not trying to put any type of spin on it, but on July 1 or June 30th, whichever day, we're all owners of all property. And the amended articles on the closing only allows, if it gets through the board, it only allows the town that has a building closing to vote on it.
I thought we changed that because we talked about it because we're going to be the ones absorbing it. The kids aren't going to disappear. We're going to be the ones absorbing them. I thought that we had discussed that.
We did discuss it.
It just didn't get, oh.
Nope, it was the town.
So the, the reality of that is a significant portion of the new district is not going to be able to vote on their commonly owned property.
Right.
So I'm wondering, I don't know if that's even legal because the, the new district is going to be warning a vote for only a certain component of the new single district. I don't know if, if a district can even do that. It's.
You can. Articles even more stringent than this actually went through the State Board of Education. So, you know, there, there are some districts that said 100% of all voters have to unanimously approve. I mean, other things that are just like, couldn't even fathom passing that bar, made it through the State Board of Education. So.
The other, the other interesting scenario is MVU, which is located in Highgate. So in 30 years, and I say 30 because the MVU articles have lasted for 50 years. So these articles could very well be with us for 50 years. If in 30 or 40 years, if MVU is to close, the only voters who are going to be able to vote on that issue are Highgate voters.
And I think that is something that in the default articles, there was a specific reference to a union high school and that did not get put in. I think because it was a union high school, that there's statutory language that we should be able to, should that scenario ever occur, we should be able to address it with a vote of the entire district because all three towns built that school. And the premise for the other is the fact that, you know, Swan's school was built by Swan. You know, those, but MVU was built by three towns together. So I realized that that was not caught by the amendment committee. So it's something that, should that ever arise, I'm sure that we would address it with school. Well, if it's in 30 years, I'll be doing it.
That, well, that's the significance of this vote.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because the articles could very well be with us for 50 years if we're using that, and you are, as a guide.
Terry mentioned something that since we, we had the March meeting and I know that the idea of the Australian ballot was a hot one, it's one I followed and sort of spoke out. But things seemed to kind of cool since then. You don't hear a lot of discussion. But a few people that I have talked with, I don't think are very excited about some of the changes. I could say that we go back to the default articles. I know, I mean, I know that some of the towns, it's very emotional, very passionate.
Yes.
And I'm not saying they're wrong, but I don't see that same passion in Swanton that we have to pass these articles because if not, the world's going to come to an end.
I think the default articles are reasonably calculated for most scenarios. Some of them, and if we start with those default articles and people really believe firmly that we need to adjust something or some of those default articles have sunset language or something, you can bring a single article to a voter in the future if the board wants to address them.
If people are confused, feel uninformed, don't like it, they vote no, then we're back to the default articles, right?
Correct.
And then we go from there.
Which wouldn't necessarily be bad for Swan. Which in my opinion would not necessarily be a bad thing for Swan.
And I'm also trying to clarify for people out there who maybe haven't asked anybody. But I've had people ask me, so we vote no. Is the world going to come to an end? I said, probably not in Swanton. But no, seriously, so. I'm not advocating, and I know that's a little hot topic, but I'm just saying, you know, people have to understand that if you vote no, it doesn't throw this whole thing out nor does it take you, you've got to start all over. There is a safety net. People may not like the safety net, but there is a safety net. So.
So, okay. So thank you for that discussion. And then.
Facility.
Facility update. Is Jason going to be here?
No, he's not.
Okay.
That was.
If you were to gate that, yeah, it was early within the principal's report.
Okay, and also the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
We'll wait and talk about those.
Good. I do remember you saying in the budget. Okay, so warrants, we're on the fiscal and HR reports. Should we do the warrants first?
Sure.
Yep. So I make a motion to approve warrants in the total of $621,995 for the month of March.
Do we have a second? I can second it. Toby seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Verb staining? So it's four, two, zero, four, agree, four out, yes.
Question. Last time, Laura, you came with us some and you said we could wait, but we decided not to wait. What's the bill? Something? Did that work out okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there more warrants? Or is that it?
Just the one?
Okay, great, thank you. Now we're getting to the much anticipated budget.
Just a note, I passed out a financial report, as per your own information. If anyone has any questions, that's for the current year, feel free to email, call.
Thank you.
As usual, or whatever.
So that's the 2018, 2019?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I also passed out a budget draft, a local budget fiscal year 20 proposal, which says budget local draft five on the bottom right corner.
Wow, local draft five. Thank you.
Local draft five. There have been a lot of drafts, Laura. I just want to acknowledge how much work that the business office has been doing with pure expenditure budgets and then emerged budget and then going back to local budgets, just so we can have some options open to warrants.
It's incredible. Thank you.
So this is, is going back to a, not a full expenditure budget. This is more typical of what you are used to seeing. So I have net revenues from assessments, which is what you would truly be paying. You had already had like your intervention positions that are filed with Title I dollars. You already have them in your budget, so they're still here. On the far right corner, you'll notice a variance from the merged proposal column. That made the most sense to me rather than merged since your last draft because we basically took your last draft and proposed that to the transition board. And there were very few changes since then, but there were a few. And so that's where you can highlight those in that variance column. On the first page, after school program support, about halfway down, you'll notice it's been decreased by about $58,880. That's the most recent budget for the 21C grant that has been adjusted there.
Did they get more grant?
They did not get more grant. Her grant has been approved for the 21C, but not all the new portions of her grant, the expansion pieces haven't all been approved. But this allocation would still be all that Swanton would be responsible for.
Right, and that allocation is 5880 less than the last draft.
Yes, yes.
Because we made some changes.
Yep, yep. The budget changes.
So, but it's still a $12,000 increase, which is a what percentage increase?
Hold on, I can tell you.
First page.
School program, 12 over 36.
31, 310, 311. Is it 30%? 35%?
33.
33%.
Yes, we have a number of particularly, is this the version that has no Sheldon?
This is the version that has no Sheldon.
And it's merged.
No, this is not merged.
No, this is not emerged.
But it's not excluding Sheldon, so that is a contributor, yes.
Yeah, I just think it's, I think after school program does a good job. I just, the community, I think, should just be aware that, that's a 33% increase. And I think they've done well. I don't think we've ever really increased much at all.
Pretty flat the last five years.
I mean, flat, but I can remember, I think before there was an after school program and it was, it started out, it's like normal, started out totally funded, zero. No cost to us. And it's decreed.
It does. And that's the way the federal grants start with 100% coverage and then get up to, we receive over half a million dollars. And then the other revenue that we have in our district also counts as well. So we actually leverage a lot of money for the amount of contributions that the local districts have to pay. But, you know, this grant will be for four or five years again. So it's really, you see the changes when the grant is reapplied for.
I think, Toby, if he was new on the board or was before he came on the board and we put the first money, and I remember Jack, I think, saying this is going to work pretty well. You put in $25,000 or something, and they all said, sure. And we knew that was the beginning of an upward swing, but it's over.
Other than that, as I said, you'll notice in the assessment lines, it looks like there's a large variance from proposed to the transition board, the merged budget draft, but it's really just the difference in where the revenues are being applied. So there wasn't a $92,000 change to early childhood. It's just this one now has revenues net and emerged is being applied in another, another place. Same thing for central office and special ed.
So what does this come out to for us as equalized pupil costs with this?
If you look on your last page, there's a tax rate calculation page.
Oh, wow, what a joke. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Way to the chase.
Wow.
Of course, these are estimates at this time because we don't know what the property yield will be set at by legislature. Right now I'm using $10,666. But your expenses are projected with this draft to be up about $157,491. I'm looking at that far right column. I think you guys have that. Yeah. Revenues are projected to be down about $36,000. Oh. Oh, it's the transportation reimbursement, which is now net out of your expense, so it's really not a change. Equalized pupils for Swanton are up 20.91. Those have not been finalized. I did go to a business management, Vermont Business Management Meeting on Friday and the AOE is saying that we were supposed to expect those finalized numbers this week, which is much later than usual, but I'm using what I have. So that's your spending for equalized people. It's actually projected to decrease about $144 or 1.9%, 1.09%. Property yield going up, which is the $10,666, is right now estimated to be up $446. That's a good thing for your tax rate. So your equalized tax rate prior to the CLA being applied is down 2.2 cents, and that's 66.9 cents. After the CLA, CLAs in all the towns of Franklin County are going down this year. It's decreasing to 102.81% from 104.25%. So if we take the CLA into account, your tax rate is projected to decrease 1.3 cents in Swanton if this local budget were to be approved and the yield was the same and the equalized pupil was the same as I'm predicting.
That's a good for local budget.
Yeah, local budget.
Can I ask you one more thing? Because I have some numbers I want to just talk with them about. And that is, can, can we, you have the Highgate equalized cost for pupil this year?
What?
What that is?
This year?
If, on their budget, what...
On their last draft that they looked at?
Yeah.
$16,486.
I think I would like to make some comments, if that's okay, for you all, since working on the transitional board. Toby, you might be interested in this, and Deanna, and... But, um, we looked at the spending for equalized pupil, what it would be overall with this budget. But we also looked at the spending, because everybody wanted their own budgets, right? Because we didn't know, and Franklin even went so far as to warn it. And we've just heard that their budget this year, if they were on their own, and remember, if we're on our own, we're pulling all that together to make the big pot. So what they are on their own is important to all of us. So what they are on their own is $15,261 per equalized spending for equalized pupil.
This is Highgate?
No, this is Franklin.
Oh, Franklin.
And last year, they were $13,464 spending for equalized pupil. So they've gone up almost $2,000 in their costs this year from last.
It's seven, almost $1,800, 13.37%. So, one of the big variables for them is the small school, not to interrupt you, but the small schools grant, and they're only guaranteed the small schools grant in Franklin, which is like anywhere between $48,000 and $68,000 if they merge. If not, then it depends on their population, and then ultimately, the state board of education gets that.
Oh, so that doesn't have it in it?
It has about half. They chose to kind of hedge their vet, and they did half. So it could be worse, it could be better.
So, Highgate, last year, their equalized cost per pupil was $13,757. This year, it's $16,486 with their budget, group budget. Last year, Swanton was $13,266 spending for equalized pupil. This year, if we did it on our own, it was $13,121.
So we haven't done a very good job of that.
We've been very...
Highgate's taking, Highgate's equalized pupil numbers are dropping 20 this year. Frank, Swanton's are going up 20.
So...
And that happens in one year.
Yes.
It's really changed, the numbers have really changed since we first looked at Act 46. Remember, when we were there?
What if you combined the three?
If you combined the three, which of course Laura did.
Is it equal?
Well, I combine them, but I don't like to look at them. I know when we're selling budgets on an elementary school level, we tend to not look at the high school, but truly, when you get your tax bill, you're paying on the high school AM. So I combine them when I look at them, so that's how I have them prepared.
Oh, good point. What, these were two, these equalized pupil?
No.
No.
The elementary school gets one, the other percentage of population, and then the high school gets one.
Okay, well, wait a second. The ones that I used for last year, I looked those up in the reports. So I think they must have had the high school involved.
No, they don't. Not in the town reports. The high school was about 14 this year.
Okay, okay. So that helps then.
Right.
So all these numbers were right.
But I have, I have those numbers put together. So if you take the high school into account, um, for last year, so now we're talking element, your full tax rate, education tax rate, for Franklin would have been $1.31, 31.2 cents.
Oh, I've got those tax rates right there.
Highgate would have been $1.25.
You don't have the cost per pupil on that.
Cost per, yeah, I do. But there, but you, cost per pupil is when, is calculated separately.
Okay, I can never...
So it's $14,000 straight across for the high school, for all the towns, and then each, so your individual. But that, that's where you get one tax rate at the end. Yep, after your CLA is applied.
Right.
So, um, what I've started to do is look at what those combined differences are.
That's good.
So, um, last year, Swanton with your MVU portion was $1.27, almost 28. And if you approve this local budget, you'd be at $1.32.3. So it's an increase of 4.5 cents. That's after CLA, that's everything. That's what you'd actually get billed.
Wait, can you say that again?
Yeah.
For this, in this budget here?
In this, that's, that's, that's emerged budget.
I'm sorry, that's emerged, but in our budget here?
Yes. You're, you'd be going up, well, with MVU.
With MVU. Thank you. Okay.
So while your tax rate in Swanton for the elementary portion is going down 1.3 cents, MVU's not going down, it's going up. So when you get your tax bill, you're going to be going up 4.5 cents. That's MVU and Swanton Elementary School tax rate to the town.
If we look at the budgets separately.
Right.
Yes.
Swanton's portion is going down 1.3 cents, if we look at it this way.
That's, that's helpful.
If you looked at the merged version, your tax rate would actually be 1.382. So there'd be an increase of 10.5 cents over last year. That would be applied to Swan for the MVU and Swanton portion. So the merged version of the budget, and the tax rate impact of that, would be 5.9 cents higher than if you approved the local budget that you have in front of you. And that's both portions, though. That's Swanton Elementary and MVU. It's your total tax rate.
That, that's not as bad. Thank you.
So how does it play out in the other two towns?
So, in...
The merged budget.
Right. In Highgate, um, they, their total tax rate, the current year, is $1.25.2. This, their proposed draft is $1.44.2. So that's, and that's what their local drafts own with MVU. It'd be going up 19 cents.
Is that the merged budget?
Nope, that's their own. The merged budget would have a tax rate combined of 1.337. So they'd have an eight and a half cent increase. So if they merged, they would be 10 and a half cents less than if they stay on their own.
So what we were saying four months ago, just the opposite is happening.
Because of the equalized pupil numbers. If you lose 20, and another town gains 20, Swanton's going to benefit, I mean, Highgate's going to benefit, Swanton's going to pay more. That's, you're dividing it by equalized pupils.
And it's also the pre-K is all included in the equalized pupils now. And it didn't, it wasn't when we were looking at the past information. You know, we only went up to like 20 in seventeen years.
And Swan has a majority of the pre-K kids, so it...
So it really skewed it.
And is that because Highgate doesn't promote pre-K?
No.
Their population of kids.
And space, I think, too.
Let's finish this, if you don't mind.
No, they have a classroom that has tons of space in it, and they don't have kids in it.
So, I think Franklin, I wrote a little differently.
So we know the percentage of kids on...
Franklin's combined MVU and...
Percentage, we have the numbers right here.
Combined this year is 1.312. If they remained local with the budget they have proposed, it would be 1.465. It's an increase of 15.3 cents. If they merged, the increase, they would go to 1.405, which is an increase of nine cents. So if they merge, their tax rate would actually be six cents less of an increase than if they remain local.
So if we...
They also lost equalized pupils, and they're losing revenue, so it's...
If we delay the merger, if we delay the merger...
Your tax rate will be lower. Others will be higher. But I like to remind, and this is my plug for this, because the whole point is to get rid of the peaks and valleys. So, you know, five years from now, I don't, not projecting this to happen, but if Swanton were to have really high-cost kids move in, and Swanton's enrollment went down 20, it may be the shoe was on the...
I just feel badly, because I think that was opposite of what I was telling people three or four months ago.
Oh, totally.
It is the opposite.
It is the opposite.
It's really your equalized pupil numbers.
And I am really sorry, because part of that number thing is mine, you know, from when we were doing the things. But the pre-K adding in, since, I mean, that just makes us way higher on equalized pupils.
So was pre-K not included at all? And what was, why?
But the majority of it is just increased enrollment.
No.
Yeah. So they're counting the pre-K, but because you have a much higher percentage of the pre-K population, then your enrollment goes up that much more. But also the other grades. Swanton has been on the up. Other towns have been going down slightly. Franklin's actually coming back up, but it's a two-year weighted average, and they had a low year last year. So they're getting hit for that this year. Highgate is projected to keep going down, I think, at least for next year. Their enrollment will be...
Are there any, uh, separate articles on the Franklin warrant?
Nobody has separate articles.
It's just, just budget?
Oh, are they electing a board member?
Oh, I'm sorry, but we were talking financial.
No, my, yeah, I know financial.
The only, you know, I mean, a good example would be, um, they're hopeful in Highgate to develop the airport more. If that were to happen, there would be a lot of development that would happen in that area. Those kinds of things can shape demographics in the future. So our hope is obviously that Highgate and Swanton continue, Highgate grows rather than is having a decline. I think that's actually, it's not a pie in the sky hope.
Yeah, I think more and more families are moving farther out, as, you know, the suburbs around Burlington are becoming much more expensive, and...
Hopefully they don't go to Highgate, too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think, you know, I think Swanton is seeing that boom. I know my personal experience, that's exactly why we moved here. And more and more families, especially young families, they either can't afford, or they just don't want to be housed for, and are moving out into, you know, Swanton and Highgate, I do think that it will continue that trend.
Well, you know, I really do think that, in the grand scheme of things, it helps, because I've gone on record a couple of times now, that in terms of the myth that Highgate and Franklin lose and Swanton wins is a myth. It's wrong with the new numbers and with pre-K involved. However, if we are forced to merge, then another way of looking at this is, all of us are part of the community, and all of us need to work together. You know, I hate to have kids not get what they need just because they live in Highgate versus in Swanton, or vice versa.
And they all go to our high school.
Right. And we're all going to the same high school.
So if the merge is delayed, it's going to be an interesting discussion for these local towns. Who thought they were getting short-changed, and they're going to go, ooh.
I don't know what they've been saying so far.
Has it been about tax, like, from what I've heard, the issues have been more about control than tax rate?
They've been at both, I've heard.
I've heard both. I've heard both.
I've heard definitely both.
And we just allowed as...
I think I've heard the money more. I don't think most people care. They've looked at MVU, I don't think the control is as big an issue as it might be with people in Swanton. It may be, but the money is an issue.
Yeah. How have other communities responded to this difference in tax thing?
Well, I think I can...
It hasn't found much. We're not really to the point yet where we've been marketing these points.
So I think...
This is just surfacing now. This work is just happening. Local budgets are just coming to the service now.
Highgate, I think it was very clear to them when they looked at it, and they looked at the timeline, and the pros and cons of warning a budget and adopting a budget right now. Would it make sense to warn a budget that would be voted on two weeks before a merged budget would be voted on? That it would be confusing to taxpayers? People would be saying, well, here you say it's this percentage increase. Here you're saying, what do you mean? It all sounds like voodoo to people anyway, because equalized tax rates, most people don't get it anyway.
Well, the taxes would be different, the spending for equalized people would be different.
It's all very different.
They're going to say, I just voted on a budget two weeks ago. Why am I voting again?
If I'm the Highgate board, of course I'm going to say, let's not bring it. I mean, with the, with our own budget, it's a $1.40, it's a 10 and a half percent, 10 and a half cent increase. Without that, with the merged one, it's a decrease. Why would I...
But what's, I mean, what's the end game? Like, why? Highgate's not a decrease. I'm sorry if I misspoke, but Highgate's not a decrease.
From what they would have paid, the increase.
They would be 19 cents with MVU and Highgate with a local budget. They'd be eight and a half cents. So it's a 10 and a half cent. Okay, just want to make sure I was clear.
So they also feel that they would have more work to do if they were presenting a local budget?
Yes, exactly.
They also feel as if it's, right now, it is, again, we go back to the one week or month where 100% sure, we're going to have a delay, and then it's been stalled in conference for almost a month now. And the scuttlebutt is that it is not going to happen, and people are going to let it sunset. And at the last minute, they'll put a default budget safety net in the miscellaneous education bill.
Which, the meeting I went to on Friday, which is the Vermont School Boards Association officials group, this AOE was there, and Brad James seemed almost 100% confident. I mean, you can't say 100%, but he said, one of these budget proposal, default budgets, will end up in the miscellaneous ed bill. He just doesn't know what it would be. It's going to be the 80, even borrow up to 87%, or is it going to be based on the increase to the spending statewide? But he led us to believe that we will be getting a default budget if we don't have anything yet. Not that that's where we want to be, but it's better than nothing.
You know, I guess if we were thinking of warning it because we are afraid that we won't have a budget pass, or we're afraid our budget won't pass if it is delayed, the fact is, our budget is a really reasonable budget. I don't see where we have to, I mean, if we had a lot going up, then yeah, I'd say just in case, we probably should. But we don't really have a lot that the taxpayers aren't going to like on our budget, do you think? I mean...
I think so. I think the risk of not only confusing people, but possibly angering them...
Yes.
Is not, like, again, if, if I had a belief that Act 46 was not going to happen, then I can, I can get behind doing, presenting a local budget. Given everything that's happened, even if it's delayed, we're just kicking the can. And so if we present a local budget that has a decrease in taxes, and then we put together this merged one, because Act 46 is going to happen, people are going to be upset.
Yes.
And not to say they're not going to be upset, otherwise, like, knowing that it could have gone down. But I just think that is just adding unnecessary fuel to any fire.
And it's not as if there are some towns out there that are talking about, well, if we at least pass a local budget, we know we can have that money. Well, no, you can't if you're forced to merge.
Right.
You know, that if your local budget means nothing if in fact you merge.
Yeah.
It's just an exercise. If you really feel as if you're in one of those situations where, boy, you could flip a coin, and we wouldn't know whether we're going to merge or not merge, that's really when you might want to have to. Some towns have chosen to do that, but they did it a long time ago. Right now, honestly, I think the biggest turnaround in Highgate was when we were looking at the dates, because you can only, 30 to 40 days, and you're doing the, you're calculating 30 days, and it's basically a week and a half before the merged budget's going to vote. And that seems, where if you...
It just won't work, I don't think it'll work.
If you wait until the merged budget is either adopted, or there's a delay, which is just in a couple of weeks, then you really know whether you're going to have to warn a, warn a local budget or not. I mean, if it's Mother's Day, and we don't have a delay, we're not getting a delay.
So, I'd like to hear y'all's opinion on this. And before we do that, though, I just want to say a couple of things, and that is that, yes, we've been telling people different things, Swanton, that they were going to have lower taxes, that they were gonna have lower taxes, so we're gonna have to do some marketing or whatever, we're gonna have to do some.
Control.
Yes, we're gonna have to do some PR. And yeah, when I look back on it, I think.
Put a positive spin on that, though, that enrollment going up is good.
Right, so enrollment going up is good.
She's loyal to pupil cops, right?
Right, but not if you've got lower enrollment elsewhere. But I do wanna say this, there's nothing Swanton could have done. I mean, we're, we've been obeying the law. If anything, maybe it would have calmed down some of the other people, but I don't think, like you said, I don't think it's really as much about taxes as it is about loss of feeling like they're gonna lose their school, which, you know, that's not what's on the plate here, so. But Swanton doesn't have that fear because we are bigger, but we could have fought because we think, no, we don't want our taxes going up. We don't wanna take on other debt because we've been so responsible. But we also have been very collaborative throughout this thing, I think, and doing the best we can with the situation we've been granted because we've thought of the kids first, you know? So thank you, Dina, for all you've done to keep the school going with all the uncertainty. And thank you guys for all the finance stuff that you've done, for sure, it's Herculean. And Julie, I don't know how you do it. You're like calm and graceful.
And the only thing I was gonna say is, we had this conversation before, because of this, we are at a standstill.
Yes.
In some pretty important things, I think, educationally. So we're being patient.
But we're paying for being patient. I mean, school.
I think there's, it sounds like there's nothing we can do. But we are waiting to try to do summer projects and we have teachers leaving right now. And with no budget, it's really hard to move forward educationally, so.
Yeah, the state needs to do the job.
So we'll go back to Laura, you said Brad James said that probably in a miscellaneous said they're all gonna be a default budget.
Because there's one in both, there's one version of a default budget in both bills.
Both top.
Both versions of the bills, so he's confident that something is going to end up in there. They know we can, we need a budget. They don't want us not to be able to operate.
So then in that case, we'd have a budget vote in September? The default budget would let us move forward, but then we would then bring a budget to the taxpayers?
It depends on the version, because one of the versions gives us a default budget, period. If if a budget were to fail locally. The other version allows us to borrow until a budget is voted. So they're very different versions.
So that's what I follow.
So so what do you all think? Do we warn a budget or not? Toby, let's go, start with you over there.
That's how it went in Highgate, too.
Cris estimate.
I I I kinda, I'm kinda curious on how much we're being handicapped as far as employees next year. And I don't know if that's all can be discussed right now.
Well, we're having executive session, we should talk about that.
Because I think, so if we, if we, I'm trying to think of the timeline. I go to someone else first, I'm thinking.
Okay.
If you have questions you need answers to, I can.
I don't have any questions, I'm just thinking the timeline right now.
So what's the question?
The question is, do you think we should warn a budget or should we wait?
No, I don't agree with you. I don't think we want a budget. I think the taxpayers, I think they're confused enough now, and I think it is. I think the bigger issue is, maybe probably on camera, I'll get an email tomorrow or something. Maybe maybe the delay would be a wonderful thing, even though I have a meeting that way, but maybe the delay would be good. Like Highgate and Franklin figured it all out, that they're big winners, not losers, and then we'll all come back to the table.
I would, I do think two two votes on a budget right now would be very confusing.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't even know how to explain it. I mean, explaining the amended and imposed articles are very hard because it ties in with the the way we're voting for ourselves, too. So I think I think two budget votes would be confusing and hurt voters and all.
Especially, what I'm concerned about is that such the variance in the spending for equalized pupils in the towns is gonna be hard to explain why, if you vote for this local one, it's gonna be thirteen two sixty-three. But if you vote for this merged one, it's, that's gonna, that's really hard to explain.
Especially when it goes up.
Right.
I think if we wanted to put a local budget up, and I'll come on, if we want to put a local budget up, then we should make a commitment to tell people we are gonna support delaying. Because if we take that, if we put a local budget up and it passed, then we should make a commitment to staying with that local budget for the year. Otherwise, we're just kinda misleading them, they pass the local budget, then we go a few weeks later or whatever things and pass the other one, and they go, whoa.
But we can't even say we would commit to a delay because we, at this point, that's not our decision.
I mean, it still is dependent on the conference committee, and if it comes out and says, oh, yeah, put it on the new boards. And even at that point, as, like, I'm running for the new board and I'm not gonna say that.
Put it on the new board?
No, I'm not going to say I will commit to a delay.
And I'm sure the other towns are not committed to delaying to see these new numbers.
Yeah, I I think where we were going with with, yeah, exactly, where they've seen these numbers. But I think what we were going with with what Toby and Dina were kinda getting at is, by not, if we pass a budget for ourselves because we might not get a joint one until August, would it give our teachers a better sense of security? Would it give us a possibility to spend money over the summer that we haven't had?
Not if we have to merge, no.
Because July first.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would be just paper. It would mean nothing if we had to merge.
If we had to merge.
Okay.
And I don't think that's. And I don't think it anymore. I don't know if we're advocating to to not vote till August.
No.
No, okay, or even July, like, we're just talking about waiting until next month, right?
Right, good point, yes, yes.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about, we advocated, it doesn't pass, it goes again, it doesn't pass, you know, that's what I'm concerned about.
So so one thing I would mention to Terry, and it's a possibility for us to consider, is it does play into this. Franklin County Senator is on that reconciling committee. And I guarantee he's only hearing from probably one town right now.
No, no.
No.
No?
No, I sat with him at lunch.
Yeah. I've emailed him several times.
He's getting mixed messages, but he's getting.
Yeah, so, all right, as long as he's getting.
He's getting a lot of messages.
But but the board could could, if we wanted to, if we agreed, we could compose something to send him to.
I think that's an excellent idea.
But but I think we have to determine on whether we want a delay or not.
Yes. Well, I think we'd have to ask Dina, if we have another delay, how horrible is it gonna be for the school?
And a delay of of Act Forty-Six?
Yeah.
I think Julie's the best one to answer. When we had talked.
I don't force her.
Sorry, Julie. I mean, when we had talked before, in my very black and white way of looking at things, if this delay were to happen, the reason why I was saying, can we adopt a budget and warn it in the event that we, that the merge is delayed? Because from what I understood, then we would then need a local budget. All this conversation about dual messages to our communities is highly noted, and I wasn't thinking that way before. All I was asking was that if it has to be thirty days to warn a budget, if we warned it and we didn't need to have a local budget because the merge came through, could we just, it would be null at that point, correct?
Yes.
And the, I don't, I, those are the legal things I don't know. I hear you saying you don't wanna go to vote or or be close to a vote, or vote, and then say, oh, now we have to merge. That wasn't in my thought at all. My thought, very black and white, was if we adopted a budget, warned it for thirty days, and we get the word on May twelfth that we're delayed for another year, we're that far ahead of the game in having a budget. Instead of waiting till May twelfth, if I do the math right, and the merger's not gonna happen and we need a local budget, then we have to warn for thirty days and then have the vote at a time where school's probably done. Every time we've tried to have a vote, when school's not in session, it's harder. So I see both sides of that. I was just trying to to kind of get ahead. That's it. I'm very fearful of not having a budget. And even if we're only getting a partial timing when that comes, it's, I'll go back to summer projects again and I'll go back to hiring teachers.
Until you have a successful vote.
Exactly.
So you can borrow up to eighty-seven percent, but it's not like you stop proposing a budget. You would still.
But how how do we then say, well, we don't really have a budget, we don't wanna borrow, so we're not hiring the three teachers that left?
For sure.
Those are, those are hard conversations to have. So those were, that was just my feeling on it. So when you ask how big of a deal it is right now, I feel, the longer we eat, the longer we wait to hire people, those people are already gonna have jobs. I mean, it does, it, you know, hiring in June is sometimes harder, and sometimes it works out, but, I mean, we'll do what we have to do. But I think even making the decisions on if we can hire or not, I mean, that's something that we're we're kind of in a freeze right now, so.
What are the open positions, like, so if if we don't hire, is that going to leave a classroom without a teacher currently?
So one of the things we're gonna talk about in executive session is the issuing of contracts. And we'll be talking about reductions in force or not. And so I think that is something that definitely should be talked about in executive session, but that's the plan.
Then maybe we need to not, maybe we, our decision on whether to warn a budget, our individual budget, is gonna be dependent on what happens in executive session.
Well, beyond that, though, I do think we we still should send a message to the transitional board that we adopted this proposed budget, right? Because at least then they would know what our board would hope that they would bring.
I think we need to talk about that in executive session as well, just in case there's something that needs to change in this budget.
Yeah, right, okay.
Again, just to be clarified, if you adopt a budget, then you're warning it for a vote.
Oh.
You know, so you you can say that this is the budget that you feel comfortable with, should you have to adopt a local budget, this is the one you would wanna be doing, you know, you can make those kinds of of decisions as a board. But adopt, when you're using language like adopt a budget, that means you've got a warning, you've got thirty days.
Gotcha.
Okay. It's a formal.
But there is a difference.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm just saying, symbolically, for the transition board to know.
So.
And the newly elected board is gonna look at the budget, but it's not necessarily gonna just take it.
Yeah, they gotta change stuff. Okay, so anything else for this meeting? Future meeting dates? Tomorrow, Franklin Northwest Supervisor Union, short meeting, and then that informational meeting.
Please come.
And the first, we're hoping the first new board meeting will be May first at MVU Library. And then we have a Swanton School Board meeting on May twenty-ninth scheduled.
Now that would be your regular, the regularly scheduled one. And of course, should there be a delay, you would schedule a special meeting and move that up. You don't wanna wait till the twenty-ninth of May.
Okay.
I just wanna make that, given the discussion you just had, I'm gonna make that really clear.
Thank you, that's right. Okay, so anything else?
Do we not set the last day of school anymore? That's not, board, board doesn't do that anymore?
Calendar is done by the regional superintendents.
So it was a time when we used to set the last day of school, didn't we? We don't, it's gone.
Jack, Jack, I don't know what went into it, but Jack used to insist on it, even though I pointed out to him that it didn't have to.
Statute is.
It's kinda carried over, and some boards still do it, I guess, in the state. They still wanna take the calendar, have a discussion, prove it, but they have no legal, they haven't had any legal authority for the last thirty years. It's a technical director. It's all, it's supposed to be a rate based around technical centers so that kids don't miss tech center classes and those questions.
We're gonna break, what do we have to do?
Well, I'm just pointing out a conflict that I think you and I have. With the, if the Swanton meeting does happen on May twenty-ninth, I think.
Oh, we're supposed to be somewhere else?
Yes, right up.
Surprise. Yes, throughout May, there are actually a number of conflicts. The MVU board I have a conflict with, so when we.
Why don't we wait and we'll reschedule?
We'll schedule that one.
Okay, so we'll take that off the thing and we'll find a time if we need to.
Meet without Lauren, you know.
No, thank you, there'd be a reason why we're meeting. Okay, so.
Is that the favor of one family or?
I would like to entertain a motion to move to executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So Megan is motioning that we move to executive session because premature public knowledge would clearly place the board or other party at substantial disadvantage. Do we have a second?
What are the two issues, I think?
Teacher, non-union administrative contract discussion and student matter.
I'll I'll second that with those.
I was.
We're not gonna talk about, anymore about the budget, though?
You should know that thing.
Yes, we are gonna talk about the budget, too.
It, as it relates to teacher contracts.
As it relates.
Okay.
That may impacted, you know.
Okay. Let's go to executive session at seven forty-seven.
Who are we inviting?
And we're inviting Laura in with Julie.
Uh, Dina.
Oh, Dina, I'm sorry. Yes, Dina, thank you, I just, I just figured you'd be there.
You didn't vote.
Oh, I didn't know we had to vote to go to executive session, I'm sorry. What's that?
Is that the first and second?
Thank you. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?